Hello Heritage Bay members. Thank you for tuning in to this video presentation of the January 18th, 2019 Heritage Bay Golf and Country Club Town Hall Meeting of the Conceptual Drawings for the Heritage Bay Enhancement Proposal, otherwise known as the H-B-E-P. I am Brenda Baus, member at Heritage Bay and Chair of our Long Range Planning Committee. At the Town Hall, we had over 350 enthusiastic members in attendance and four excellent speakers. If you were unable to join us or just want to watch it again, thank you for your interest. This Town Hall is the latest step in a concept that started with a community-wide Member Needs Questionnaire in 2018. All of our active member committees then developed those members' responses into six key strategic initiatives. This presentation focuses on two of those initiatives: casual outdoor dining and renovation of the cheeky hut with pool deck expansion. The conceptual drawings being presented here were developed by our architect, David Humphrey, based on member feedback from a series of member focus groups with specific input from club committees, management, and industry experts. At the time of this Town Hall, the H-B-E-P is still in the conceptual planning stages. We have scheduled a second Town Hall on February 21st, 2019, when the proposal will be in the final phase leading up to the members' vote at the April 25th Annual Meeting. This Town Hall includes a quick overview of the master plan, which was created to coordinate with any possible considerations for future development and conceptual drawings of only the proposed enhancements being considered at this time. As you view the plans, keep in mind that the H-B-E-P encompasses only the clubhouse grill room, its terrace and main kitchen, and the cheeky hut and pool area. You will hear from our experts what the proposal means to your investment in your home, hear about the plan of funding for this proposal, and what it will cost each of us. The recording of this Town Hall meeting has been edited for ease of viewing. Additional details are available on Heritage Bay Golf and Country Club's website, www.golfheritagebay.com, under the LRPC Initiatives page. Thank you and let's get started.
We have a very diverse community at Heritage Bay. We have several different types of living units. We have some people that are here year-round, some people that are here half the year, some people that aren't here at all, they rent their units. But we all have two very important things in common. We want Heritage Bay to be a place where we can have a most enjoyable lifestyle, whether it's for us, our families, or our renters, and we would like to see the value of our property enhanced. What we're talking about today addresses both of those common desires of all of us: to improve our lifestyle and improve the value of our property. This afternoon, we are honored to have Henry Delozier, who is a national and actually internationally well-known expert in what's being done in clubs around the world. He's going to talk to us a little bit about what is happening and why it's important for clubs to continuously update and improve their facilities if they want to stay current. He was going to be in a tag team with Phil Newman, who works for RSM, who is the lead of the audit team that does our audits, and also an expert. Unfortunately, Phil could not be with us because of a medical emergency, so we're going to have a Henry and Henry tag team. He will be followed by David Humphrey, who is the architect that we have retained to design the modifications that we'll be talking about, and he will share with you the current conceptual plans for what we're proposing to do. He will then be followed by Melanie Frye, who we have retained as the project manager for the project. She will share with you a little bit about what a project manager does on a project like this, and most importantly, talk a little bit about how the various pieces of the project will fit together and how we might sequence it. Then I will come back up with the really good news that everybody's waiting for: how cheap it is.
It's a pleasure to get to be here today, seeing all of you here. I don't know why I didn't anticipate that this would be a standing-room-only crowd, but thank you all for making the time to be here. You're making me think of a story that I like to remember. How many of you are Midwesterners? Okay? How many of you are New Yorkers? Okay? Many of you would know Thomas Friedman, the International Affairs Editor for the New York Times. Earth is Flat, Thank You for Being Late, and any number of other really thoughtful books. Tom tells a story about going with some of his New York Times friends out on Long Island to watch a senior tour golf event. And do any of you remember the famous golfer Chichi Rodriguez? Remember the hat? And as they were just passing by, Chichi was out hitting golf balls, and Tom said to his friends from the Times, "I caddied for him when the U.S. Open was at Hazeltine when I was a kid." And of course, being New Yorkers, they called out to Chichi and said, "Hey, Chichi, who caddied for you in the Open at Hazeltine?" Chichi stopped hitting balls, kind of put his hat back on his head, and said, "His name was Tommy." And the friends are pointing at Friedman, and they're saying, "This is Tommy. He's won three Pulitzer Prizes, he's International Affairs Editor for the New York Times." Well, hell, Chichi, he's more famous than you are. To which Chichi shot right back and said, "Not in Puerto Rico he's not." It's a good thing to remember where you're from. My part today is to give you a sense of what club communities are experiencing, and beyond a shadow of a doubt, it's a migration to an enriched lifestyle. I'm going to share with you a handful of trends that go along with that. Here is a slide that gives you a quick background from my history and tells you a little bit about our company, which is based in Toronto. I manage our office for Global Golf Advisors in Phoenix. We also have offices in Sydney, Australia, and Dublin, Ireland. So, to the point that Jim was making about international exposure, we certainly get to see a lot of clubs around the world. And I want to call out to you seven trends that you see here on the screen that are impacting club communities. And I won't read the slide to you, but I'm going to jump right in to telling you about each of these trends. The first is this accelerating flight to quality. The fact of the matter is, quality is the word of the day. It is driving the future of private clubs. Private clubs that are choosing price over quality are putting themselves into the loser's category. In markets like the greater southwest Florida market, Naples area, there is such a significant state of oversupply that if clubs are not continually improving, they're falling behind. The other characteristic that has come into play as it relates to the migration to quality is the fact that members' expectations continually escalate. Most all of you have been to fine resorts, you've had the experience in your own lifetimes of high-end quality, and you're expecting that from your club. And good for you, and at the same time, that's a trend that's impacting the way clubs plan and organize themselves for the future. The next trend is this expanding emphasis on non-golf lifestyle. And I call out to you that the whole idea of being in a community that is lifestyle-defined becomes vitally important in a community like Heritage Bay. As I mentioned a moment ago, you've all been to wonderful places, you've all had great experiences in your lives, and more than anything else, what you know is that when you are a member at a club like Heritage Bay, you want to see your friends and be seen by your friends. So it becomes a very important platform for socialization. The other two things that I think are going to impact clubs as you go forward is newfound recreational expectations and amenities seem to be endless. There was a time, how many of you are pickleballers? How many of you are bocce people? Most of us would have grown up with very little exposure to either of those sports, and both of those are extremely popular. Is there anyone expecting to join the bocce tour or the pickleball international tour? Of course not. But they are terrific ways to meet new people, have fun, and get a chance to socialize with your friends. That is driving the order of the day. And then the last factor that's coming into play as it relates to this whole business of non-golf lifestyle is wellness. Wellness is the new fitness, and everyone is working toward that. And within the context of wellness, the greatest trend that appeared has been brain wellness. And the brain wellness lobby is following the same game plan that we learned from the heart wellness lobby. We're seeing greater emphasis on brain health, brain nutrition, activities to help you to keep your mind well, and those are trends that are not going to go away for the rest of our lifetimes. The next trend that I want to call out to you is this emphasis on the experience economy. You know, the whole notion of the experience economy emerged with a book written by Joseph Pine and John Gilmore back in the early 1990s. And the example that was given was Joe Pine told of how his mother faithfully made him a birthday cake on every birthday. And she would go to the market and buy eggs and flour and sugar and all of the things that needed to go into that cake, and sure enough, on the top was "Happy Birthday, Joey." Later in life, she was working outside the home, she would stop, buy the Duncan Hines cake mix, and make that cake for Joey. A little bit later on in his life, she would stop at the grocery store or the bakery and buy a cake for Joe. Happy Birthday, Joey. Fast forward, as Joe explains, to his own daughter wanting to have a birthday, so he's going from $0.89 worth of groceries to, what was a Duncan Hines cake mix back in those days, a dollar and a half? To $4 or $5 at the bakery for a cake? And Joe's taking his daughter and eight girls, her little girlfriends, to the American Girl Store, spending $300 per child. And Joe's point was, would you rather be in the grocery business or the experience business? And the folks at American Girl obviously figured out the value of experiences. In fact, what we're seeing is experiences now have expanded to just about everything you can imagine and some things you haven't imagined yet. In a club as robust and as well-managed as Heritage Bay, you're going to keep wanting more and more experiences. Used to be, everyone was accustomed to the annual guys' golf trip to Scotland or Ireland. We're now seeing trips to clients of ours in the south of France where there's the combination of golf, wine tours, and tied into the Cannes Film Festival. Those are experiences that people in clubs like yours are beginning to expect. Getting together a group of friends, people whom you know and enjoy, and going on a cruise or on a river ride down the Seine or one of the Danube are certainly other examples along those same lines. We're seeing the experience economy expanding like never before. The whole idea of regeneration comes home to roost in communities like Heritage Bay. The whole idea that the community is aging in place and will at some point become younger again. As early pioneers in the community move along with the next steps in their lives, they are replaced by new residents, new members of the club. The average age at time of purchase in club communities like this ranges from 57 to 62 years. So as you think about this community and as you think about counting your own years, you can contemplate the regenerative process, and that certainly comes into play as it relates to how do you plan for the future? Because the fact of the matter is, the people who will buy your property, the people who will succeed you here at the club are maybe 40-somethings now, or 50-somethings now. And it's a charge for all of us to be thinking about what will they want when they come to Heritage Bay? Because what they will want will be something different than what you bought when you came to Heritage Bay. The next, the keys as it relates to the regeneration process and the trends that are coming out of that is these ideas that you expect nowadays businesslike governance. It was so fun for me to watch committee members coming forward, to watch how carefully your leaders are working for you, and the fact is, you expect that. You believe that's part of the bargain. So the idea that the club or the community is going to be run like a scout troop is out the window. You expect transparency, you expect thoroughness, you expect the idea that there is a clarity of mission in the things that you're doing. And to be blunt, you are intolerant of anything that falls short of that. So as you see a trend impacting your community, understand your high expectations of your servant leaders, and by the way, remember that they are servant leaders. They're paying for the privilege of putting in all this time for nothing. So it's important to try to find a place of appreciation, but it's also important for you to understand that there are high expectations, they're doing their best to meet those. But that trend is not going away, and as we see in so many clubs, what we're experiencing on the evening news is in many clubs acting itself out. And you want to be sure that the quality of the governance that you endure or experience is to your satisfaction. Certainly, your leaders are trying to do that for you. The next factor that comes into play is the idea that your club is a brand. You may not think that, you may not even like that, but the fact of the matter is, we live in a brand-driven economy. And if your economy, if the economy is going to be good to Heritage Bay and your property investments, then it's vitally important that you attend to your brand. The fact is, your brand is everything you do and fail to do. So when you're looking at how you manage your brand, it's important for you to keep in mind that you're establishing brand standards, that you're fulfilling the strategic pillars that were described for you a moment ago, that you're endorsing the quality of your brand and the lifestyle that it represents to the next generation of buyers. If your brand is not attractive, if it is not high-profile to the next generation of buyers, that's to your disadvantage. But a little data point, perhaps our grandmothers and our mothers allowed our grandfathers and our fathers to think they were running the show? The fact of the matter is, the show is run by women now. 91% of home purchase decisions are made by a female. Now, think about that, 91%. For you guys that are all out there disbelieving right now? If you make 91% of your free throws, you're leading the NBA in free throw shooting. And for that 9% of you fellows who are out there who said, "Well, I just told her to hell with that, this is a house I'm going to buy, if you don't like it, too bad for you." Because I'm guessing that probably you don't hear well? Or maybe you just kind of were expecting to live there by yourself? But the fact, the statistical truth is, women drive the future expectations of club communities, of lifestyle communities like Heritage Bay. And therefore, as you contemplate what is it that people want, what is it that they're looking for, they're looking for fun, friends, fitness, fresh air, all of the things that you can think of that make a community like Heritage Bay click. And that also kicks in as it relates to things like wellness and fitness, to casual dining, finding ways to pull the outdoors in or push the indoors out for casual dining. The notion of, "I'm going to our club and its quality is defined by a luxurious, high-touch dining experience," is passe. You know, if you look around the room right now, the only people here who even have on a tie or a coat are the ones that were paid to be here. All of the rest of you are here to have fun, to enjoy your lives. The rest of you should understand that you want a casual but elegant lifestyle experience and facilities that support that. So those things become very important as you look to the future. One last trend that I want to call out to you after brand management, and that is, everyone expects to be treated as if they're important. Everyone. You may not be Steve Jobs or Elvis, but you still expect to be treated in that manner. And the fact is, you're going to see more and more in your club and in other clubs that you visit with personalized services. You're going to walk in and expect to be recognized by people whom you've never met before. You're going to have the expectation that you're going to continue to receive escalating services that are unique and personal to your needs and expectations. So all of those things conspire to adding up your experience as being one that is exceptional, that is memorable, and that is one that is superior to the many other fine clubs in the area. So when you think about a lifestyle community, and back to the point that I was making a moment ago about brand, it's important for you to understand, when the developers of this community were active, they spent a lot of money on brand management. They spent a lot of money marketing and communicating the presence of this community and the club. But as the developer leaves, the people who are residents, the people who are members, do not pick up that marketing ball or that brand management ball, and the brand goes silent for a period of years. And in this day and time, where everyone expects information on an immediate basis, it becomes vitally important that your facilities and that your lifestyle are supportive of the brand that you claim. So as you look forward and think about what is the future hold for Heritage Bay, it's really quite simple. If you are paying attention at all, you're trying to achieve a level of economic sustainability. And that means you have to keep your lifestyle and your amenities, the assets that you enjoy, fresh and responsive to your needs and expectations. So with that, with those seven trends, that tells you what I came here to tell you today. And I certainly do appreciate having the chance to be here with you. Thank you very much.
I love coming to Heritage Bay. Everyone here is so friendly and accepting of new ideas. I fell asleep watching the news last night, and I don't know if that's where I got this idea, but I woke up thinking, "Let's build this, and let's make the quarry pay for it." Just a thought. Anyway, this is a process. We have been, have kind of a colorful history here at Heritage Bay. And in this specific instance, when we're asked to do specific tasks such as casual dining or the pool café, we're worried about the domino effect of things. So we strongly advocate, "Let's find out what all the pieces of the puzzle are," therefore creating a master plan, "and then see where these pieces fit in so that you don't put good money after bad as you proceed down whatever happens in the future when you find it a priority." So aside from the strategic plan, we created a schedule of focus group sessions, and the initial sessions were more programming all the things you felt were necessary here at Heritage Bay, as well as the specifics. And then we had a handful of kind of proof-of-concept sessions that would kind of ferret out problems and so forth. So this is actually part of the process, not just a presentation, but looking for your feedback along the way, and we'll make adjustments and so forth. So you will see plans that are actually a result of a lot of hard work. It is one set of plans, but they reflect studies in certain areas, revisions to that, community and department vettings. We did a lot of these types of sessions with your staff and management, so we have kind of the full-rounded program, not just the members' experience type of thing, but also what works best in the back of house so that when you order something, you get it in a hurry, and your food's actually hot, and you don't have to wait for drinks and so forth, even when you're busy. So those are the things that we want to get a full picture before we go ahead and create what we hope is a dynamic solution for the things that Henry mentioned. It's interesting, appreciate your comments, Henry, because, you know, we look at it from a design, inspiration, solution standpoint, program solution, and it's great to hear Henry boil it down to more of a philosophical, "This is your lifestyle." This is, we're not just creating a bar stool in a neat place, we're creating the dream, right? Whether you use it or not, you've got this dream down. It's kind of like when you buy a boat. You can use it, you don't, but you can use it, right? So anyway, let me just walk you through real quickly where we start when we start looking at things. When we did do, just so you know, what we're thinking in the overall program, the program that was created, which is reinforced by a strategic plan, additional casual dining in the grill room, larger and better socially configured bar. You know, the bars, the bar you have now is just kind of a straight bar, you can see people on either side of you, but today is, you know, the bar is now in the forefront. Bar is a social hub, it's activity, it's the transient kind of feeling where you want to come in and sit down, maybe not for 10 minutes, but you're up and moving across the floor and talking to friends. So the transient type of setup and the element of synergy is kind of today's program, responding to today's lifestyle. So that's kind of a major thing in all clubs. Larger, more diverse kitchen, of course, dependable covered outdoor dining. Dependable being covered because you can affect that by misters and fans and heaters and roll-down screens and so forth. It just makes it more year-round worthy is what we're after. Additional casual dining at the pool café. I mean, the pool, you know, food and, when you take water and mix it with food and alcohol, there is a chemistry, there's a magic that happens, and that has, the secret's out, man. I mean, people are doing that across the board. That is the single most requested change of campus element that we've seen in the last, you know, 50 campuses that we've attached. Larger, more interactive bar, same concept as the upstairs. Enhanced resort pool deck. You know, the term resort used to be a dirty word in the clubhouse world. You know, we're a club. Resort has become now the thing to seek, you know, the shaded, the palms, the cozy areas where you can cluster with your friends or, you know, engage in proposing to your next wife. So anyway, it provides all the, again, responding to your lifestyle, that's what we do here. Better fitness and aerobic facilities, consolidated administration for better interaction, and consider more effective use of locker room space, as well as back-of-house spaces and so forth. So those are the things that we look at. Our actual program is actually about 150 items, but this kind of gives you the down and dirty. This is the master plan. This is your existing club, and forgive me, I've only got one hand. So just a few things that we saw as challenges, I'm just going to be able to point to one side here, but your lobby is good. There are a lot of good things to the club. I mean, you have some good bones, good volume. The spaces are unique in that the club's more of the modern era when it comes to the space available to do things. So this is a big room, you have a nice-sized card room. The grill room's okay, it just has some issues. So as you come in the lobby, kind of the one thing that's always been curious to me is, it's become an affectionate term, this birth canal, that you kind of come down and as long as you're headed the right way, you'll get to the grill room, but heaven forbid you pass somebody. It's really a tight you pass somebody, it's really a tight space. The elements that, there's a lot of conflict, right, at this entry point where you have servers coming in and out, servers to the grill room, servers to the main dining room, there's service stations here, so you have dishes and so forth going on, your waiting, maître d' station. So there's a lot of conflict, congestion, right, at that one singular point. The kitchen is also, I don't know how your staff does what they do in that small space, and literally, they are on top of each other. I mean, there's just not enough room. When you see the space of the kitchen, you know, it doesn't seem that small, but this is all the support, too, the storage, the freezers, the prep, the ware washing. So the actual hotline is just right there. That's it for all you people. I mean, that's crazy. So that in itself is hard, and obviously it precludes simultaneous functions, which is a key element to the vitality of the club, which means do the à la carte, have your members be allowed to come in or be able to come in anytime, even if there's a function here that you're not a part of. So that's a key element that we're doing in all new clubs as well, but that also is another element that you're seeing repetitively requested. The grill room is kind of a curious as well, where a curious position, because when you look at rooms, the relationship between rooms in the world of clubhouse design, they would potentially want to be next to each other or have walls that are contiguous so they can open up and be flexible and have some pre-function space migrate into the larger space. And the actual proximity of this space, there's only really corners, you know, same thing with your grill room, or excuse me, your card room. It doesn't really allow for that capability. So those were all kind of interesting type of challenges that we felt, if you're going to change it, why can't you enhance those things? The other thing we try to do is, when we do this, is put a round peg in a round hole. Just because you have the space somewhere that could accommodate something that you're looking for, doesn't mean it's the best space for it. So if you're going to go at this, do it right. Just do it right, okay? That's all I'm saying. So with those challenges identified here, and of course, not to mention your administration area, which really is kind of a token space, so. So the proposal then would be taking you from the foyer. What we've done is tried to diffuse the idea that that is such a narrow corridor. And so what we'll do, it is a bearing wall, but we can pierce that bearing wall. So what we have is kind of a see-through wine wall. So just imagine walking down there and looking through that kind of wine, you know, glass wine room into the main room. So you still have a separation for noise and so forth, but anybody been to agaves or you've seen this type of thing, right? So the other thing we've tried to do is diffuse the congestion by creating an access point into the kitchen for the main dining room before the waiting area and the greeting and the hello, how are you doing type of thing that happens. It's not just meeting the maître d', it's also, oh, hey, how you doing, Joan, what's going on, Fred, you know? So there's that kind of thing that's going on, and that's why you're here. You're here for the camaraderie and so forth. So we've made that space a little bit bigger. And then what we've done is actually, this whole area now is the kitchen in its gross area, but what we've created is an à la carte line, hotline, as well as a banquet line with an expediter's table and so forth. But all the things that you don't have, you have a lot more prep area, you have linen storage, which you don't have, or maybe you have it in one of your showers downstairs, I don't know. But you have walk-in coolers, you have employee restrooms and lockers within that space. And then kind of another key thing that assists in all this diffusing the problem thing is we have a different, an additional service access and entrance into the grill room itself. So half of all your servers now will be going directly into the grill room, they never have to pass that point. So we've really created what will be really the members' experience, more than anything that you've ever been accustomed to. The other main kind of benefit to this plan is we used a lot of your existing grill room to expand the kitchen. So we are going to go out a little bit into your service area, but not as much as we needed to. So that's going to save some money just from a new building standpoint. But what that does, in essence, is it moves the grill room out in front. So now, where before, you know, if you were sitting in the dining room and had these great views, you know, the guy in the back of the grill room now, again, is so far back, it's dark, it's dingy, it's kind of a, you know, it's kind of like a place where you go if you don't want to be seen, almost. This allows great peripheral, this great panorama, really. So you can look out this way, you can look out across the bar, and it really provides for a great potential for the grill room now being some kind of pre-function room. This wall now can become a door that opens up into that room. So now, and it works well for, if this grill room becomes too packed, you can open up those doors and kind of steal some space from the dining room, and vice versa. If this room becomes packed, then you can kind of bleed into this room. And when you have a large function, the whole thing works together, of course. So this room just is a lot more fun. The bar, as I talked about, the island bar is probably the best solution for sitting on the corner, sitting on the round ends, looking across the table at friends, the camaraderie and the synergy that happens in an element that allows that to happen. It's just so fun. It's just a fun place. I mean, there are, I can name 10 restaurants and 10 clubs that have this, and it's such an inviting place. It's one of those things, instead of it being accommodating, it's now a destination desire. I got to get back there. I got to bring my, I can't wait for my family to visit, I can't wait for my friends to come down. And it's, the atmosphere is such a wonderful thing, wonderful change, and the synergy of the space just provides for how I want my lifestyle to be. So this kind of brown area is the air-conditioned space of the grill room. This kind of coral color is actually outdoor. So the island bar is kind of a wonderful configuration, anyway, but what we've done is located it such that it's half in and half out, and these, this wall then is a folding set of doors that, this time of year is perfect for it to just fold it back, and then that just becomes one big island space. The grill room also opens up to the terrace, again, just providing for really kind of a wonderful migration, kind of to and fro as the wind blows, so to speak. We've also, since you're going to be hanging out here so much, it's really kind of necessary that we create restrooms to accommodate that, you know? You don't have to be away from the bar that often, so. But it also allows the ability to let this area be kind of self-sustaining, the use of the restroom and activity, as well as a function going on in the main dining room with its restroom. So we have addressed the administration area, tried to consolidate the elements there, the relationships, as well as the number of people. And that, again, being the master plan, it's not part of the domino thing, so I'm not really going to spend much time on that. But needless to say, those are types of the things that we'll look at and see what does become a problem down the road. Downstairs, really, there wasn't a lot about the downstairs, other than can we repurpose the billiards room for activities, can we do something different with storage and so forth? The main discussion kind of revolved around the locker rooms, which aren't used a lot, still necessary. But the fact that the card room areas are used quite a bit, can we do something to exploit that? So if you were to take kind of this core area, what we did was just kind of reconfigured the grooming areas a little bit. We did include some day lockers, you're going to need some day lockers for the member guests, and just if you want to come and change, and the one time you want to stay here and then go to dinner. But if you just provide, I mean, this is really a simple solution, to take that space and take the wall between what is now the locker room and the card rooms, and allow that to be one space. You could keep, you know, allow folding doors there and have, still have two spaces, one of which would have to be through each of the restrooms, but do that to both sides, and you really have kind of doubled your meeting space, which is kind of at a premium at this point now, too. So that's, again, something you can do anytime and very easily done almost anytime, so. So that's the clubhouse. This would be the area down by the pool now. Again, one of the areas that have been kind of a colorful subject over the years. We have done a lot of studying in this area, and we've tried to make the elements that you have there work from a reuse or expandability standpoint, and really what it came down to is the size of the kitchen, the bar, and the seating area was really the tail wagging the dog with using that existing facility and almost awash in the cost in trying to make that work. The big problem was its proximity to the pool and how it hindered kind of the resort feeling and the graciousness that space really needs to have. So this is a new building. It's backed up a little bit from the existing pool, and I'll show you the plan in a second here, but what it's done is there's a bar kind of right under that word. Let me show you. Okay, there's the actual plan. So what we did is we rotated the bar kind of around so that it has a really, again, we're trying to take advantage of the panorama that you have. So you can see how by rotating it, it really opens itself up to the full view of what it has to offer, rather than just what it is now, kind of a straight bar looking against the wall. So it is, it's a peninsula bar backing up to the kitchen. So the kitchen is a, it's a full kitchen, but it's a grill-sized kitchen, not the, it's not a country club kitchen, but it's a grill-sized kitchen. But what we've done is kept your existing pool. We did expand it, possibly a beach entry, kind of that thing that you've seen where you can just walk down in, and it's a great play area for kids, or just if you want to wait a little bit, put your lounge chairs in the water. And then a water feature of some sort. So, you know, not only during the day does it provide this great kind of sound, you might have to use the bathroom a little more, but that sound of water running. But as the sun sets, you know, the water comes down on top of the lights, and as the water, elements of the water hit the lights, you know, the water flashes, the light flashes up the waterfall. So it'll create kind of another level of focus as the sun sets. Then what we've done is incorporated cabana-type facilities, trellis areas, so you want filtered sun, as well as just additional lounge chair with soft seating, fire tables, in groupings as well as kind of like two and four-seat areas. We did get some comments about maybe the possibility of additional trellis work, additional shaded areas, but what we've tried to do in kind of recreating this resort-style area is incorporate pockets of large planting clusters so that you'll have, you'll have nice canopy shade. So you don't need everything to be a structural solution. It's a lot warmer, a lot softer, and it does provide, you know, those trees provide a lot of shade. So we have an elevated deck here. We are wrestling a little bit with the fact that you have retention area, but we found a way to recoup some of that space and relocate the bocce area so that really the pool deck and the amenities around that, dining expansion, as well as soft seating, is kind of the fore-focus of the pool area. And even though there's a state law saying that you're going to have to drink when you play bocce, we feel that this proximity is still adequate in getting you serviced while you're playing, so. Let me go back. The one thing, again, in the master plan is, fitness is a big thing. It will always be a big thing. You do have room there, even though it seems tight, there is expansion for about 2,500 square feet. So that is something that is not part of this proposal, but is part of the master plan. Pool cafe, as we talked about. The other thing, too, is it has golfers' pickup, so the activity is still there, responding to the activity of the core there. The bathrooms are now, two toilets per each bathroom, men's and women's. So overall, it provides really kind of a nice solution. The one thing that the plan provides for, that you may not think of in day-to-day, but it does provide kind of an activity zoning, and the bar acts as a natural divider where, you know, families and children and so forth, access to the pool can happen on this side, and, you know, a golfer settling their bets can happen on this side, and creates a nice separation, interweave, community tables and so forth. So those are kind of like bars, but they're tables. So it's just a nice feature type of thing. This is the fitness center. We'll make some modest adjustments to the fitness center itself, but the brown areas on the right are the expansion, so. That's something that'll happen, you know, when it becomes a priority for you, so. So that is a broad brush of the master plan. And then, so for the Heritage Bay enhancement proposal, the casual outdoor dining, it would include only the clubhouse grill room, kitchen and terrace, and then the pool cafe, pool deck, expansion, bocce area. That's it. Finito. There's no more, there's been a lot of talk about project creep. It's not going to happen here. So I think that's Melanie's job. So I get to do the fun stuff, she's kind of the law here, so. So what that is, it is just the grill room as mentioned, the covered terrace area, the kitchen, bathroom area. The red line there shows kind of the line of the existing facility, and then how we would expand beyond that. And then there's a shot of the exterior. So you can see the outdoor area and, you know, the panorama you have, you have such a beautiful setting here, this will really exploit that. And those railings will be see-through railings, either aluminum or glass, and then sometime in the near future, hopefully, these balusters can be replaced so that people in here can see out, too, so. You know what the island bar looks like? This is one we've completed, and the integration of TVs and so forth, where if they're done tastefully, they work with the space. I mean, you know, having this type of facility with the social interaction and then being able to sit and watch the game, or watch, you know, whatever, you know, the days of our lives, I know is a really important thing. So, you know, when you have that ability, then you don't, you can go and have lunch and have a drink, and you don't have to get back by 2:00. You can stay there. So it becomes a real destination solution. And we've seen that happen now, and you can't imagine how popular that is and how much more it's used now, because you have no reason to leave. This is taking that solution. There's the island bar, and you can kind of see the doors are shut now. That's the inside, that's the outside. So when you open those up, it becomes kind of a real neat overall solution. This is another one, little more modern, but you can see the doors are open. The continuation of the bar just looks like one big island bar. So it's just fun. It's just a fun atmosphere, and it's fun to have. The outdoor spaces, again, are more rooms. Your solution is not just a ribbon terrace, this is a ribbon terrace. Ribbon terrace is similar to the straight bar. You can only see the table on either side of you. You can't enjoy everybody in one room. So we've created a room for the outdoor as well, with the bar in it, so it really creates a nice space. We've talked about a handful of other features, whether it has a fireplace in it or a water feature or something, but, you know, it's not just solving the programmatic element, it's the manner in which you do it. And those are all things that add into the ambiance, that'll create memory moments and enhance your experience. The pool area is one thing that, this is, like I said, this is the singly most requested element to today's lifestyle, and I think it's great that you have recognized it and it's consistent with what's being done. So the pool, the pool cafe, the pool deck, the pool expansion, the cafe itself, of course, and this is kind of the concept of, that's your existing fitness center, the new club, and just the integration, it's just, you just want to go there. I mean, it's just one of those things that responds so well, and when something responds really to the way you, you know, a lot of times, you'll see people have changed their lifestyle to the facilities that they have, and now you have this opportunity, and it really is, you're going to create and live out this dream that is such a desirable way to live, so. You know the concept, it's an island, peninsula-style bar, TVs, integration of seating with the resort-type activity on the outside. Vanderbilt down the street, same thing, and... And their only complaint was that this ended up being so popular, they think they might have to add on to it now. So, good problem to have, I guess. You know, the soft seating areas with the fire tables, not a new thing, but it's just how you do it again. Those types of things are so exciting and they're just fun. You can have a fireplace or you can have a whole series of fire tables and kind of share the love for that type of element. So, all things that'll enhance your overall lifestyle here. So that is all I have to tell you. I thank you for your attention.
So my name's Melanie Fry. I work for a company, JS Held, and we do owner's representation and project management. And happy, very happy to be involved in this project. Have really enjoyed working with everyone so far, getting to this point and be taking you through the vote and then hopefully on from there. Just a little bit about me. I'm from Cincinnati. I'm getting, we're in the process of moving down here, my husband and I, over the next year. We've had a place in Siesta Key for a long, long time, so I'm kind of familiar with this and the type of environment that you have, the club environment, which is wonderful. I'm a graduate of the University of Cincinnati. I'm a mechanical engineer by education. I've been in construction for 30 years. So what does a project manager do? I think that the committee just wanted to kind of make you all feel comfortable that they're thinking about the fact that this has to happen on a timeline, it has to happen efficiently, and it has to stay within budget. So as Dave said, not, I'm not necessarily the most popular person, especially with the designers, and sometimes with the committees that want to, that one extra thing. But one of the things that we do is, while we are an advocate for the owner 100%, we're also really keeping you from being your own enemy as far as things like Project Creep or adding things that just even if it's within the same space, but we just don't have the money for it if costs come in too high or something. You know, really making sure that we stay within a budget. One of the things that we, that the committee has, that the management, that Heritage Bay has decided is to keep a 20% contingency on all their numbers. So, you know, when we are presenting numbers, in the future, you're going to feel confident that we've thought of everything and then we've accounted for everything that we haven't thought of. So that's kind of what we do. My company also, it's not just me, this is a 550-person company. We do estimating and so there's, and we have civil engineers, electrical engineers, other mechanical engineers, structural. So if things come up, we do building envelope, things like that. So we'll do a full constructibility review once the drawings are ready to make sure that, you know, everything has kind of been thought about and that everything's coordinated. So immediately, kind of the next steps, if you all decide to move forward and we get a positive vote, we'll work with the local regulatory agencies, define all the different timelines, what the requirements are. Of course, it's the designer's responsibility to put all those together, but we kind of help try to quarterback that as far as, and make sure that the things are getting done when they're supposed to be getting done and not holding things up. You know, a lot of people think that, you know, once you've hired the architect, no matter how great they are, he still needs some help. So there are people, there are many other team members that will have to fill in. So civil engineer, landscape planner, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing work under Dave, but the interior designer is separate, the kitchen designer, the equipment supplier, AV and security consultants, pool designers, pool equipment suppliers. So all of those things have to be, we have to be, all those team members have to be brought on as well as, of course, the construction manager and/or general contractor when that time comes. And we would recommend that that's sooner than later. So before the drawings are even complete, we will do a process of evaluating and bringing in proposals and competing for your construction manager so that he can help, they can help finalize the plans and make sure that we're staying within the program as well. And also monthly updates. I had this, I had like five slides of all the things, wonderful things that I'm going to do, but we're down, we went down to this one, but one of the things, monthly updates for the board, speaking to any of your committees, keeping people up to date and et cetera. And then that's the end of what I'm going to do. I did have one other thing that we wanted to talk about, to piggyback on to Dave's presentation, and that is to kind of talk about the numbers of seats. This was asked at the focus group and I just wanted to bring that up so that you have this in mind and it'll be shared too. But your original grill, your existing grill has 89 spaces. When you're complete, you will have 204 if this should go. So feel confident that that's been thought of and that you are making a significant increase there. Out at the Cheeky Hut, which I know is near and dear to many, many people's hearts here, you have 56 dining seats out there now, eight at the bar. You'll be going to 122 seats at the Cheeky Hut and 19 at the bar. In the lounging areas, the different seating, lounge chairs, et cetera, the current plan, currently you have around 90 of those. We're going to 160. So significant increases in all of these so that you won't hopefully have the Vanderbilt situation where we could do it and then we have to do it over again or you, it's so popular that you can't use it. So we want to make sure that we've thought of that and just wanted to make you aware. That's it.
One important thing to keep in mind, what you've seen this afternoon are conceptual One thing I can absolutely guarantee is if we approve this project and we go forward with it, the final completed project will not look exactly like what you've seen today. Obviously, if we go forward with the project, we have to do detailed plans, detailed design, detailed construction drawings, et cetera. And so there may be some variations as we go forward, but the things that you can absolutely count on is we will increase the size of the kitchen, we will add outdoor dining, we will expand the food service at the pool. It won't be the Cheeky Hut, it's going to be the Pool Café. But, so keep in mind, we are talking conceptual. Details are subject to being worked out. At this point, the financial estimates are rough estimates, just like it's conceptual drawings. So we are working with numbers that have a fair amount of, not only her 20% contingency, but we're looking a little more contingency than that right now as far as coming up with the plan. But overall, three contributions to paying for the overall project. Part of this will be done with reserve funds, money that's already been put away to add some enhancements to the grill room or downstairs. Somewhere on the order of $700,000 will come from that. In addition, last year, we started taking a portion of the capital contributions associated with each cell, each time a unit is sold, there's a $3,500 capital contribution. A portion of that last year was put into a capital fund. Most of it this year is going to be put into a capital fund. Much of it next year will be put in that capital fund, so that will contribute to paying for this. And the balance, we will get a 10-year note and then we get to pay off the note over those 10 years. The cost of paying off the note based on current conservative estimates is $900 a year per member, or another option we're looking at is $75 a month. And out of curiosity, I'm going to ask for a show of hands, how many people would prefer, one versus the other, how many people would prefer $900 added to your annual assessment? And how many would prefer $75 a month on your monthly bill? Very interesting, opposite of what I would have thought. Where do we go from here? We, no, we do not have a forum. We will be continuing to work on developing the project. There will be, the videotape of this presentation will be put on the website, so anybody can see it. We are developing a virtual tour of our facility that should be available in a few weeks. And there will be another town hall meeting, February 21st, where we will be able to present additional details as we go forward on the project. And of course, the vote to approve or the project will be associated with the annual meeting. The ballots for the annual meeting will be going out sometime before March 25th, probably March 22nd, 23rd. You should be receiving your ballot in the, for the annual meeting. You'll have a ballot to vote on this issue. You'll have a ballot to vote on changing our governing documents and you'll have a ballot to vote on members of board of directors. So with that, I'm going to open it up for questions and we've got Mike. Wait a minute, who's got the microphone? Mike has a mic. Bob has a mic. Lori has a mic. Put your hand up if you have a question and one of these people will come to you with a microphone. First one, Mike.
As you go into the planning on this from a financial standpoint, you've covered the cost of expanding and... Okay. You've covered the cost of what it's going to take and how you're going to fund it over a 10-year plan. What's the cost going into the annual fees in regards to hiring additional staff to manage all these things as well as to provide the services that will be required? Is that going to be part of the overall financial plan you submit for approval? So we know it's going to, because it's just not going to be the 10-year note, it's going to be an additional increase in cost. That's not a negative, but I think we need to know that.
Certainly, we have been trying to evaluate what impact the expanded service will have on our annual operating costs. And truly, that's a very difficult and challenging number to come up with because, of course, you've got additional revenues, but you have additional staffing. So we are trying to give some consideration for that and make information available on that in the future. Bob, you have one? Lori's got one.
Oh, thank you. I could tell by the show of hands when you were asking the questions, how many people were on committees, how many people participated in this and that. So obviously, this group here is an active group that's participated, that probably uses a lot of the amenities here and would probably be, a lot of people would probably be supportive. However, like with everything else, a lot of the people that probably would benefit from hearing this probably aren't here and maybe haven't gone to any focus groups. So I think we need to talk about reaching out to those people instead of walking out of here and saying, okay, it's going to cost $900, you're going to be paying $900 a year for 10 years and then the people are not knowing anything that's really been developed here, what are they going to think about that?
As I just said, the whole purpose of videotaping the presentation here today is that it will be available on our website in about a week. I think it's about a week from now. It should be available on the website. We will be sending out information to make people aware that it's there and that they can go and look at it. We also are working on putting together a brochure describing the project, which we will put together and send out electronically to all of our members as well as putting it on the website, as well as having printed copies available here at the clubhouse. And certainly, one of the things I was planning to do at the close of the meeting is ask all of you to be advocates for the program, if you believe in the program. And my guess is that most of the people that are here will support the program. If you weren't interested in the program, you probably wouldn't be here. But go forward and talk to your neighbors, talk to your friends and do your part to stir up some interest in it.
Jim, you've got another one?
Okay, Lori.
When approved, do you have a projected completion date?
That is, that is one of the biggest open areas right now as far as exactly how to sequence the project, what's the best approach to doing the project. One of the things we're very interested in doing is making sure that we, throughout the duration of the project, have food service available one place or the other. And so we're trying to figure out the best sequence, but it, at most, it would be three years and perhaps as little as two years after approval. Obviously, if the project is approved, that's when we turn on the design work to do the design, you know, the detailed construction drawings, get the permits, et cetera. So it's got to be a number of months after approval before we can start construction. Mike?
Yeah, it looks wonderful. I'm really impressed. Question I have is, was it considered to have a lump sum payment instead of a 10-year note?
It was considered and it was decided that instead of trying to get into a more complicated process of financing, we would keep this one very simple and everybody do the same thing.
Do you know how much it would have been per door?
Less than $9,000.
Is that the best number you got? I mean, can you...
I'm sorry.
Is there a, is that going to go before the group to decide whether, how we want to finance it?
No.
Okay, because I personally would like to see it as a lump sum. Maybe there's others who feel the same way. Is there any downside to doing it as a 10-year other than what we know right now?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the last question.
Doing it as a 10-year, does that limit us in any way other than paying it over a long period of time?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I mean, the bank?
Yeah.
One of the benefits that has been recognized in going through this in other clubs is that if you sell your house, then that cost goes with the sale of the house. So that seems to be a big benefit for people. If, don't know that they're going to be here that long, they don't want to pay a bunch, a big assessment right now when they may or may not be here in five years. So that's a big benefit that we've, that clubs have seen. Shoot, I had something else, but that was it.
Okay, Bob?
A question on expansion, more people, a lot more activities, it all looks very good, but the parking lots are still the same size and you have more people coming in with vehicles and where are they going to enjoy the facility if they got a...
Excuse me, could we have just one person speaking at a time? Go ahead, sir.
The question, we're growing, more people, more activities, great, but the parking capability is limited at best now and three years from now, it'll be a third, half again is more. Where are people going to be parking?
I would encourage people to do what I do, which is ride your bicycle to the, or do what my wife does, which is walk to the, over here. But we are certainly aware of the fact that we are somewhat limited in our parking. We are trying to come up with additional parking, although that's extremely difficult just because of the amount of space that's available. But we're looking at trying to come up with solutions. Lori?
Good afternoon. Now, in the $9,000 per door, I imagine that the fire tables and the kitchen equipment and for the upstairs and the downstairs and all that is included in the $9,000 except for the wall here. the nine thousand, except for the wall here, I suppose. Is that it? The railing? Everything else is included in there?
The answer is yes, right? I'm turning to the person who did the estimate. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any concern about timing, how long it takes for construction to be done, particularly after having the hurricane? I'm noticing roofs being done on Heritage Bay, and it seems to be taking them months to do ten roofs. So, I'm just wondering, how accurate are our timelines, particularly if you're going to be sequencing the building, and our food delivery depends on it?
The current timeline is exceedingly inaccurate, because we really don't have one. And we're working on it, and we're certainly well aware of the issue of trying not to have the whole place disturbed for longer than we need to. At one point, one of the options we were looking at was do the pool area one year, and then do the grill room a different year. However, that means mobilizing and demobilizing construction twice. So, we're looking to see if there's some way we can do as one continuous project. We want to minimize doing them totally simultaneously, because we do want to maintain food service of some sort throughout the entire duration of the project. So, we're looking at different options and trying to come up with the optimum sequencing of how to do it, minimum disruption, minimum total time, and, and keep the cost down.
And when they, when you hire the CM, it'll be, that timeframe will be in their contract.
Mike, you got another one there?
I spent twenty years as a school superintendent, dealing with people voting on referenda. One of the, first person that spoke commented about dissemination of information. I believe we have a vehicle already in place that I would hope you would consider using, and that's the local HOAs. Disseminate information through the HOAs, possibly make it social, so that people will come, and then that will get the word out. If we don't get the word out, we're guaranteed the no votes. This work was excellent, and I wish you the best. I hope it passes.
Good suggestion. Thank you very much.
I was wondering what the debt level is at this club at this point, or if there is debt, and...
That's an easy answer, zero.
Zero. So, the second question I have is, when you're looking at this ten-year note, what's, what are they looking for in the line of collateral?
Dues.
Just dues.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Bob, behind you. Finally got it.
In the plan, you're showing this ribbon porch here balcony to be covered. Is, and it's not presently, so is that in the plan?
No.
Or is that a future part of the plan?
There is no part of this project to cover the ribbon out here. What will be covered is the new terrace area that's, that's built off of the existing grill room.
Okay.
That will be covered, screened in. It'll have lights, it'll have fans.
Jim, to address the parking issue, in one of the focus groups, it was suggested that we invest in a, probably a van-like vehicle to just run around the streets and with, you know, little bus stops where people can hop on it, come to the club, have dinner, hop on it, go home, you know, whatever, and have that running continuously to alleviate a lot of traffic.
I've, I've heard the suggestion. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was wondering, what percent of the owners have to approve of the project to get it passed? Fifty-one percent, seventy-five?
MJ? It's fifty, fifty percent, isn't it? Whoop. She get... MJ, do you remember if it's fifty or sixty?
I would want to check the documents. I believe it is a majority vote for a project like this, but, but we want to make sure we check our documents to verify, to verif, thank you, to verify what the percentage that we need to pass for a membership vote. And I, I would throw the ball over to Stephanie for that as well.
Stephanie, do you know the answer off the top of your head? Majority? Fifty percent, plus one. Okay. And it will be done by our voting rep process. Mike?
I recently had a real estate brochure passed to me, and in nineteen, in two thousand seventeen, sixty-three homes were sold. Two thousand eighteen, seventy-seven homes were sold. Unfortunately, I didn't see any trends where the prices of the homes were going up. If this project is approved, is there any expectations that my property values will go up, down, or stay level?
Our project manager is absolutely guaranteed that there... No. There is, of course, no guarantee of what will happen to property values. One can only assume that if everything else were to remain constant, that this would increase our property values. But, nothing stays constant in the world, so, you know, who knows? But I can, hold on just a second. Henry, you want to address that?
You should, you should plan on the notion that your property value is not going to escalate, despite the fact that there is a great deal of evidence that suggests improved facilities increase property value in lifestyle communities. But rather than chasing the rabbit into the bush, why don't you just assume that it will not escalate, and then you can be happily the beneficiary of its escalation? A question that's being asked up here is, what happens if they don't escalate?
What happens if we don't?
Oh, the question is, if you don't, if you, if you take no action? I'm not sure how many of you saw the article last week in the Wall Street Journal, but there's a great deal of evidence that suggests you'll see substantial erosion of your property value. With aging facilities, with an aging community, and no indication of improvement, that, that certainly is a formula for lost property value. And the range of lost property value typically is seventeen to thirty percent.
Okay, Lori?
Back to the parking situation again, and your suggestion to either walk or ride your bicycle. I would love to do that, to come up and play golf, but I live on the far end of the property, and it's not very convenient to carry my bag. I didn't see anything addressing the size of the back storage area. I know there's a long waiting list for it, and I think personally, if I was able to store my bag, that would be one less vehicle in the parking lot. Has any consideration been given to the back storage?
Uh, no. Mike?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought it, two years ago, when this proposal came out, a proposal came out, was, it was much more extensive, and if I recall, it was at that time, six thousand dollars for each door that was going to be charged, and now we're up to nine thousand. Am I correct in remembering that? And what, what is the difference?
I am not in a position standing here today to make a comparison between the two projects. I don't have that data in front of me, and I would hesitate just off the cuff to try and do that analysis. Lori?
Hi, Bill Sontag. The question of property values, we're twelve years old now. Property values, really, the, the club has, has continually updated. I think all of us agree, in the last three years, have been a tremendous number of improvements made to it, without increasing our debt. Our problem we're facing now is we have a lot of properties that have been on the market for an extremely long period of time, and the reason that they are is not because their agent is no good. The reason is that they have no appeal. So, we as owners are more responsible for the value of our properties than the community is. If, if your, if your unit is old and tired and beat up, as, as many of these are, which have been in the rental market for twelve years, you're going to see them sit for a long time, because nobody wants to buy someone else's problems. They don't want to buy new carpeting, they don't want to paint, they don't want to update the furniture. You can buy a really nice turnkey unit that's appealing at a lot better value than you can buy something that is not appealing, that needs a lot of work, and save ten thousand dollars. That's not, that's not going to get it done. So, if we're worried about our property values, the biggest thing we can do is to keep our property up to date and looking good. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
This is a follow-up question to the lady that just asked the question. We're talking here about renovating the pool area and the grill room. You told us how much it would cost to finance the bank note. What is the estimated cost of those two major renovations?
I tell you, at this point, I'll give you a number. It's less than ten million. I don't know the exact number, because we're still working on developing it.
Yeah, I understand that. But again, maybe the first proposal of a major revamp of Heritage Bay was estimated around six million plus.
I will say that the projects are different.
Tremendous difference between that project and this project, and that's why I don't want to get into a comparison of the two. You can't just look at the cost, you have to look at what was included, so. Mike, Bob, Lori, okay. Got somebody up here?
I don't have a question, but I just want to make sure I understand this, so it's more of a comment. If what Henry has just said about property value suffering by as much as seventeen percent, if we do nothing, then that could mean that someone that has even a hundred thousand dollar property to sell, which I don't think anything in Heritage Bay sells at that low a price, would be looking at a loss of seventeen thousand dollars. So, I think you have to look at it in terms of, one way or another, we would pay for this. Either you pay for it out of pocket now and enjoy the improvements while you're here, or you pay for it when you go to put your house on the market, and if we've done nothing, you're paying for it then, but it's a gross amount that comes off the sale price of your home. So, I think that we need to look at it in terms of cost-benefit, and not just cost.
Yes, ma'am, I totally agree.
Okay, I own three properties at Heritage Bay, and I'm suggesting to you that, you know, if we throw nine hundred dollars a month for ten years, and we don't even know the cost...
Nine hundred dollars per year.
Per year, for ten years. For, a year for ten years. So, nine, yeah, so nine times ten, nine thousand dollars per unit, over ten years. And we don't even know the exact cost of the, of the renovation. So, I suggest we do our, our estimates, our cost, and then we come up with a number, because suggesting a higher cost, a lot higher cost than actual, probably will turn people off, and then they won't vote for the project.
Yes, sir, and I guess I wasn't very clear. That nine hundred dollars is an estimate based on today's information. That is not necessarily the number that will be on the ballot. Hopefully, the number that actually ends up on the ballot's going to be less than that. But you know, if I sit here today and tell you eight-sixty, and then we turn around and it's eight-seventy, everybody gets all excited about it went up. But if I tell you today nine hundred and the ballot number's eight-seventy, everybody's happy, right?
No, no, but we don't want to put forty percent contingency on the number. This is, this will turn people off, and then they'll vote against it. So, that's what I'm trying to tell you.
I'm just telling, I'm trying to give you a number today that I am completely confident we can stay within. And, and hopefully, the number that actually goes on the ballot will be something somewhat smaller, but not a huge amount different. Got one back there, Mike?
In terms of the sequencing, did you consider possibly, you know, doing the, the new, you know, casual dining over here, and taking the load off the Tiki Hut, and maybe splitting the, you know, that would sequence that first, that second, and maybe if it took a big load off the Tiki Hut, you wouldn't have to do the Tiki Hut?
We have not considered not doing both projects, but we are looking at all sorts of options for the sequencing. Going once. Going twice. Okay, I encourage everybody, go for it.